Alright, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order then. It's 6 o'clock. Now let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, there's just six of us now, and Pat is absent. Changes to the agenda. So it looks like we've got... Oyat. Monetary donation from Wethers. And hiring of Melinda Winkles. So, anything else? Any other changes? Okay, there are none. Is there a motion to approve those two changes to the agenda?
I'll move in for the change to the agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now we need to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you Dave, is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright. Any type of public input tonight?
Nothing.
Alright, recognition of good things happening. So we want to welcome back our students and our staff. Staff will be back next Monday, right? So, it's starting soon. And we want to wish the best of luck to our student athletes and artists this year, so. Very good. Reports. Student representative got in just in time.
Just in time for your spot. I love that. Do you guys know who this young lady is?
Better introduce her to the...
Do you want to kind of introduce yourself and your... How about a kind of a rundown of your resume? Because you have a very impressive resume already. You want to do that?
Sure.
Awesome.
I'm Seth Kate McKenzie. I'm gonna be a senior, playing volleyball. I'm on the EMS and fighter fighter. I'm currently a CNA expert in living. I am an FFA officer, student council officer. Me down here.
Busy girl?
She is.
That's good.
That's pretty much it.
Yeah. I watched your play today. I went into practice a little bit just to watch because it's so much fun. She's awesome. Great outside hitter. Great outside hitter. Wow. Yes, so very impressive. So welcome. Are you excited for the school year?
I am actually.
Your senior year, it's gonna go by that fast. Any words of advice for her for her senior year from the school board?
Take it all and enjoy it back. You gotta be a big girl.
That's true.
And don't procrastinate in your senior project.
There you go, hard hat. There you go. Very good.
Get right on that.
Awesome. Well, as you can see, she is an athlete, so she'll try and make as many meetings as possible, but we do know your team trumps all of us. So make sure you fulfill your obligation to them first before us. Okay, awesome. Thanks for coming.
Very good. Thank you. Principals report.
I don't have anything written down, so you guys this week or this month is just really not that exciting. Since last board meeting, I'm really consisted of planning and sending out emails to the teachers, the bell schedules, the master schedules, the handbooks. Anything, I think I sent out seven or eight different emails to the teachers, which they love to make fun of me for because they know school's starting when they get all those from me. But that is everything they need to know, from teacher expectations to all those different things. So really, the last few weeks is me just sending out everything that has either been updated, change over to the new school year, all those different things. So they have, so when they come back next week, they have everything in their hands when we talk about things. So really, that's what I've been doing the last few weeks, is updating and really making sure we're ready for the start of the school year. Couple of things that will be coming up that I will give you information as I get it. You might have heard of the REDACT coming out. We are gonna get training. That won't happen until October, so I don't have any more information for you other than training is in October. At that point, I will get the information of what that consists of, of what... There's gonna be some instructional pieces, some curriculum pieces, and things like that too. But right now, I think MDE is a little overwhelmed with this as well. So, because we couldn't get training until October and we were supposed to start in July. So, I'm a little behind on that. So, I'll keep you posted on the REDACT. Larry Thompson, I could not change his schedule to, or he could not make it to a board meeting, so I'll let you know what day he's here, so if anybody wants to come, you know, meet up with him or say hi.
Can we just reschedule the board meeting for that guy?
Whatever you want.
To maybe work...
What's up?
Is he coming?
The 12th of Monday.
Because we need to reschedule. I would like to reschedule September anyway because we have a volleyball game.
I think it's November.
Oh, okay.
I think it's November 12th.
We can do that.
Is that a Monday? I could double check the...
What then?
Seems like it was like just the week before.
It was, but I think it was the 11th.
Actually, we have to move our board meeting anyway because it's certifying the election results. As close as we can to election day, we certify.
So the 12th is a Tuesday.
So the 12th is a Tuesday. So, and election day is the 5th.
There we go. Let's do it.
Let me make sure he hasn't made his... If you guys want me to check to make sure he hasn't made his flight stuff plans, because usually he leaves here at 3 o'clock. So, if you want me to check...
Yeah, I think so. He's a pretty cool guy.
If he... You want me to pull the trigger if he can make the change?
We have to certify within a week, don't we?
So if I can...
So by the 12th.
Yeah, so the 12th, we have to. That's the last day.
Does that make us scare an hour or...?
No.
Okay.
So if he can change it, I will tell him to book it and then I'll let you know.
Is that a Tuesday? 12th?
12th is a Tuesday.
I want to say 12th, because I think you're right. We're like a week off.
Yeah, I remember last meeting talking about it and thinking, well, it's just a Tuesday before, right over here.
So if I can, if he can expand that into the evening, I'll tell him to book it and then I'll let you know so we can get that changed. Working on for leadership training, I was talking to Jen today. I'm working on, with our Leadership Academy is bringing in a professional leadership, I don't know what you'd call it, trainer.
Guru.
Yeah, guru kind of, where he does come to the schools and works like seven pillars of leadership and stuff. So I'm working on some things to start expanding our Leadership Academy. So just a lot of things out there, not a lot of information for you, just a lot of things going on. So when those things happen, I'll bring the details to you guys and explain more of that. But just like for me, it's just been a lot of planning and scheduling and making sure it's ready to go.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, except for that I just want to talk a little bit about what we said on the phone as far as Huddle. So we, I was just doing, I was just going over the bills and seeing, you know, that we're doing Huddle this year, H-U-D-L, and what it costs a school. And I was talking with Erin about whether our constituents have to pay to watch that. And my understanding, if I have this correct, is that we pay for it, but we can charge people if we want to, recoup some of the money as a school district. Am I correct about that? Okay, and so, but what I, what I as a school board member just want to say is, I would like to see our school pay for that huddle and give our constituents the opportunity to see things without having to pay a fee.
What does it cost?
It's a total of 8,000 for like football, volleyball, basketball, both bass, boys and girls basketball, and then a school, a school component. So like you can...
Concerts.
You can do concerts and things like that.
The other thing you can do with that is...
We can use it for stats.
Yeah, well, that as well, but we can, like as business, I can advertise on there. That's where you're gonna draw money in from it, where we can keep it free for everybody, because that NFHS is paying the bot. I mean, I use it for Mahatties games and stuff I can't get to, but...
It's a big expense.
It is when you're...
I just think like we're always trying to figure out ways we can reach out to the community. And this feels like a way, you know, you have a lot of grandparents who can't make it to the away games or, you know, to the...
So, away?
No, no, it won't be away. You're right.
Well, it will be, because most of them, most schools in our district have trouble already.
Correct, yes.
So, if they have it, it's free.
And we have it, it's free. So, anyway, I just was, just wanting to express my opinion that that would be a worthwhile thing and not to ask people to pay for it. But I love the idea of advertising.
Yeah, they can, you'll see those sidebars or low...
Yeah, I think we actually stop like for commercial breaks and run ads. I think Grand Metal runs, theirs is the one I've probably seen the most. I think they run a gym and that's ads.
So what have people been having to pay for that service?
I've never paid to log into Huddle. The only school I, we would have had to pay for was Fillmore Central. And it was not like by a night, it was per gate.
So people from here that have been using it haven't been paying?
We have a channel.
We don't have it.
We've been having that on the other ones.
They have volleyball game.
That's like $69. Actually, I got an email today and I can see the gym right now from my phone.
But they've been getting on away games.
No, you have to pay.
Yeah, it kind of depends on what other teams have. But most, I'd say the majority of our conference has gone into Huddle.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where they most all have on NFHS.
Away games. So somehow they're...
Sometimes the schools put it on YouTube.
They use NFHS.
So, there's like two, I can think of two schools that don't enter our conference. Mabel and...
They just got it, I thought.
They might.
Mabel did. Mabel did. Houston.
It was Mabel and Lyle.
Does Kingsland use YouTube?
Kingsland was using YouTube.
And Houston doesn't do their football outside. Houston doesn't do outside anymore.
But for the most part, everybody.
I think gyms, I think gyms most.
Yeah, Houston has it in their gym. I know. I watched it on there last year.
Yeah, I think I watched basketball on there last year.
But then getting that out, having that on, you know, it'd be nice to have that on the page. Not that we have Huddle, you know, maybe, say the girls are playing in Houston and they don't have Huddle, so you know, you can watch it here, you know.
Still have it, yes.
Keeping that information out there to let people know, because if they're, "Well, I watched that Huddle last week", well, that's because that school had, you know. Just to keep that.
Even just getting it out there that we have it is gonna be really valuable. It's just a way of saying, you know, reconnecting with the community, you know. It's a good thing.
One other thing, on the MSBA, there, on the 26th, there's a webinar for the REDACT for compensation. I just seen that on the website.
For us to go and vote on it?
Yeah, yeah, we could attend.
26th, okay.
Yeah, it'll be interesting. Like I said, we, they're a little behind. Because I requested training for July. And they said we can do October.
Did you call this handout way back in February and under this beautiful handout?
Yeah.
Since February, we've been waiting.
Yeah.
Waiting.
Actually, I had to reach out to them because they didn't send, they, I said, "Are you guys gonna send them something?" Like, "Oh, yeah", and then I magically got something after our ass, so. Eventually, but I'll keep you guys posted. Yeah, like I said, I still think they're trying to figure out what they're gonna do, because they're gonna tell us what to use, so we gotta buy new stuff from their vendors that they have deals with. So they're gonna figure out how to give us money, Jen, ultimately, so we don't have to pay for it?
Yes, that's what we're hoping. I mean, that's kind of the thought.
How they're gonna make money is probably their whole life. But I'll keep you guys posted as I get more stuff.
Again, when you don't ask teachers to be involved in decision-making, that they have to implement, look what happens. Look what happens.
Yeah, so I'll have much more once, next month when school gets going, we're off and running, but just... We're gonna make it ready. We feel, oh, we feel though, we do have a long-term sub in our elementary special ed. We're renting, borrowing, whatever you want to call it. Kathy Pillar from SMAC. Kathy Pillar is a veteran. So she will, and she'll fit nicely down in elementary, and she will also be able to help our new special ed teacher. So all of our teaching positions are technically filled. And then tonight, after approval of our part-time custodian, all of our pairs of custodians then should be full. So we should be full starting this year of school year with all our positions.
Okay. Is there any action that we need to take concerning Huddle? Or just...
Just a discussion. Yeah, yeah. If money would come up off the agenda, if money would come up through our conference or something, I'd like you guys, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Yep, for sure.
Alright, thanks Erin. Jen, your turn.
Alright, kind of piggybacking off what Deb is talking about, the importance of connecting with community. You all may recall that Erin, Deb, Angie and I went to the EDA meeting on June 17th and had a really nice meeting there, and it was really fun talking to our local city officials and kind of their desires of the city and their needs and wants. And of course, we had a chance to talk about ours as well. While Allison Whalen, the EDA consultant that the city is paying to help with, came over today and talked with Erin, we're working on some kind of give back to the community efforts. And we want to run some things through, whether it's student council, or the Leadership Academy, or whatever it is, but continue to partner with them and make sure the community sees, "Yeah, we are working in tandem and in combination and not against each other." So that was really nice to have her come to the building. So Erin's on that, trying to recruit some quality students to help us out a little bit. So we'll see what happens with that. Speaking again of some community stuff, you may recall, I sent out an email here a while back about the Fillmore County Hazard Mitigation kind of effort and event they are going to host. I would say within the next week or two, they were hoping by the end of August, to get an email out to those that were invited in positions such as mine, where emergency stuff kind of runs through me, to kind of get us all together on the same page and really go through standard security and safety items. Once that comes to me, I will consistently address all of you, whether it's at a public meeting or of course through email, what goes on. I don't know yet. I haven't got the invite, but I will be there, whatever it is. So, but it's through Fillmore County. Let's see here. Couple other things, some more community things. So Kate Rohr, our community education director emailed Erin and I last week. And with this massive list, and I know Deb, you can attest to this too, but this massive list of what we're looking at in terms of programming for fall and winter through our community education program, she is gonna present next month to all of you on what we're doing and how we continue to try, continue to grow that program. And she has done a fantastic job. I'm not gonna go through the list, I'm just gonna show it to you. So visually, you can see all the great things we're gonna do. If you log onto our website and click into our community education website, you'll be able to see all these things happening. But I just wanted to put a big shout out that that's coming this fall, a lot of good things, and she will present to you like she did last year, on what I'm showing you tonight. So I won't steal her subject too much, too much anyway. Let's see, huge thank you. I cannot thank these folks enough, but our custodians, our clerical staff, our Erin, all of you who show up for meetings during the summer, our cardinal kids and cardinal care people, our pairs who are helping us work, Chris Hansen, who is doing stuff with food service, but also custodial work, transportation items, all our folks who come in here, and I'm sure I've missed somebody and I apologize, but it's a lot of work in the summer. It's like you start from scratch and you have to rebuild up again. And I just really want to thank them all for everything they do for Erin and I. And Erin does so much for me when I'm not on site in the summer. But a huge thank you to all those folks. Really want to drive that home to everybody. Everybody works so hard, so thank you. Let's see, in terms of communication too, we will be posting on Facebook here in the next couple of weeks all the avenues we use as a school district for communication. That was one of the things we talked about in strategic planning when Erin and I presented that night, that these are the things we do, and some of our people in that strategic planning meeting didn't know that. And we had done it for a couple of years. So now every year, we want to make sure we get out a posting that shows these are the avenues that we use for communication, but also the avenues that we use for interventions with our students, so academic interventions. So we're gonna post that out. You guys will see that here in the next couple of weeks too, but we'll make sure those communications continue throughout the year. Erin and I will continue to host the Q and A sessions. However, we kind of want to manipulate it a little bit and focus more on staff instead of us. We feel like we're focused at board meetings, and so we'd like to kind of, every month, really spotlight a staff member, and they can share all the great things they're doing in their classroom, in the hallway, coaching, whatever it may be. So we're gonna try and push Axel that way a little bit. We'll see if that happens. Let's see, couple things. Oh, school district calendar, that's up and running of course, and every February and March, we come to you with the new calendars. Keep in mind too, when we do that, we always disclaim if something were to come about, that we have to change a calendar, we would surely communicate that, excuse me, to parents. But I do like to tell everybody that at a public meeting in August, that we do have the option to change a calendar if we have to. We don't like to, but we surely will, and we'll communicate that if we have to. Excuse me. And we did finally ask the staff, and I'll continue to do that, and then again, you're gonna see Kate Rohr next month, to come and present to all of you about the good things happening in their classrooms. Trevor Carrier, our A.D. and Dina Sutzi, and presents to you guys. We'll have Kate come in, so we'll have other people come in too, to talk to you about all the good things they're doing as well. What else? A lot of emails will be coming your way here in the next couple of weeks because it is the start of school, but it's just kind of loop you in and kind of set the standard of what the year is gonna look like. You're all invited to opening day if you so choose to come next Monday. We have a couple of door prizes at Bottom today, for those who leave my emails and stuff like that.
Free breakfast.
Free breakfast, there you go. You're all invited, so you're welcome to come and shake some hands and kiss baby if you so choose. But otherwise, that's it for me today. So, thank you.
Any questions for Jen? Okay, thank you Jen. Moving on to the consent agenda. We got the July board meeting minutes. Are there any questions on those, corrections or additions?
Go ahead.
Okay. Treasures reports. Any questions on any of those? Okay. Fundraisers. It looks like we have Basket Raffle for the Washington DC trip. 50/50 fundraiser for the Washington DC trip. Tailgate Suppers, Pancake Breakfast, Breakfast, Tailgating, Washington DC trip. Pastry Puffin Sales, Washington DC trip. Soup Lunchin' and Cookie Walk for the Washington DC trip. Tiff Night at Pizza Ranch and Sweets for the DC trip. After-school Activities. Looks like some things need to be determined there for the DC trip. Frozen pies and gourmet candy, all these good tasting things for the DC trip. So yeah, I guess that's it for the fundraisers. Any questions on any of that? Donations. We received a couple donations this month. $125 from Cassie Seabird, raised from the Grove Eats Food Truck, and a radio receiver from Kathy Stern in memory of Dean. So, we appreciate those very, very much. Personnel.
Add in.
Oh yeah, sorry. I just go right by the highlighted one. Underdog monetary donation from Wether Electric for the LO Athletic Department. So we appreciate that very much as well. Personnel. Administration recommends the hiring of Barb Payne as a school patrol advisor. Recommend the hiring of the following pool aerobics instructors. Diane Whalen, Shirley Miller, Alice Schroeder. They would be under the non-affiliated handbook. And recommend the hiring of Melinda Winkles for custodian. So, I guess that's it. Any questions on any of that?
Melinda in addition, she's our half. She's Velmy.
Yeah, she would take Denny's. She would replace Denny.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you Deb, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Kyle. Any other discussion questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, moving on to policies. We have the second reading of policy 420, 421, 422, 423, 424, and 425. Have there been any changes since the first reading on any of those? Okay. No questions, nothing to add? Anybody has? Okay, is there a motion to approve the second reading of those policies? I'll make the motion for the second reading of policies 420, 421, 422, 423, 424, and 425. Thank you Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Angie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright. Now the first reading of policies 503, 506, 507, 522, and 806. Anything you need to know on those policies from the policy committee?
I don't think so. Was there any? No, they were all...
Board of Plaid?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, anybody got any questions on any of those? Any comments?
One comment, just please be reminded with the crisis management policy, you guys also approve our local policy that's very, very specific to our district. And so you had, I believe, the first reading in June, second reading was in July. So you kind of, oops, sorry, simultaneously are approving these.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve the first reading of those policies I just mentioned?
We approve the first reading of 503, 506, 507, 522, and 806.
Okay, Kyle, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Dave. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carried. Alright, so we need to approve Smith Schaefer as auditors for this school year. They've been doing our auditing for a number of years. Any questions about that? Any comments? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve Smith Schaefer as our auditors this year?
So will.
Thank you. Angie, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Deb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Alright. Alright, so we need to approve the resolution for calling for the general election for the school board. Anything you need to mention on that? Jen?
No, just you already approved that we have four open seats. So we did that, was that also July? It all runs, it was June or July, it all runs together. Now you are saying, yes, we promise we will have that general election on November 5th. That's what this is.
Okay. Pretty straightforward. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I still move.
Thank you Deb, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Kyle. This would be a roll call, so Deb?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. Alright, now we've been asked to approve the request from the Minnesota Clay Target League to recognize Brent Dolman as the head coach of the local trap team. Do you have anything you'd like to say to us, Mr. Dolman?
Really don't. We got like 24 kids, I think, potentially on their roster this year. We're rolling, we got quite a few sixth graders, but things are going well. We started practice last Sunday. We'll continue on through, fall league starts second week of September. I think we're starting to score, so.
Gary's retiring, huh?
Gary's just kind of fading into the background a little bit. He's still gonna do a lot of the behind the scenes stuff with all the grants and all the fantastic fundraising and stuff he does to keep that a very, very affordable activity for our kids. I mean, we're $40 a season per child, and fucking any other district around, it's not even close, so.
At a zero. At a zero.
Oh, for sure. I think it's $900 or $1,000 in Cresco, Rensfield, per season, per child. So we're very, very fortunate for all he does. So he's just kind of stepping out of the leadership role and... So he's just kind of stepping out of the leadership role and pulling back into the behind-the-scenes stuff where he kind of chose to be, so.
Sounds good. So even though Brent's not an employee of the school district, we're just recognizing that he is the head coach of that, that club, or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, it's quite hard to guess, have that, so we're affiliated with the school district, we have to. Any questions, anybody has for me?
Okay, would someone like to make that motion?
I will make the motion to recognize Brent as our coach in the trap team.
Sounds good, thanks, Kyle.
Second.
Thanks, Angie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. Very, very good. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, it looks like we need to talk about, uh, the fact that we don't have a board treasurer at this point in time. She just resigned last month, so. Jen, tell us what we need to do.
Well, you can nominate somebody, you can make it very simple. Um, if you so choose, you can just nominate somebody a couple of times, you have to do it a couple of times. Um, and then we'll take that person.
Somebody like that job.
What's it, yeah, maybe asset.
Deb, you've done it before, right?
Yeah.
Are you willing to do it again?
Yeah. That'd be great. I'd nominate Deb.
Okay.
And now you ask again, though, is there another nomination?
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Deb.
Are there any other nominations? Any nominations for treasurer? All right, would somebody like to make a motion to cast a unanimous ballot for Deb as treasurer?
I'll take a motion, I'll make a motion that Deb's our new treasurer.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Deb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Deb.
Great, good. Thanks, Deb. How about the training on your job?
Yes, she does. Just go right in.
That was easy, that was easy.
She's our gal.
Okay, um. All right, we need to talk about and approve the purchase of an enclosed trailer.
Okay, so this is kind of messy, but if you run it through school board policy, it isn't. That's why it's in front of you. Normally, we would not have to do this, right? I can just pull the trigger and say, hey, I'm gonna purchase a trailer FYI, right? Because it's under my threshold. But because we were so graciously approached, um, by our local community that is willing to donate money, but they have to wait till their next meeting to give us the money, we have to do it this way. We have to front the money for them as well, because that's their new policy. And it actually goes in line with our school district financial policy to do it this way. So we're gonna upfront the money to say, hey, we'll buy the trailer, they will then essentially reimburse us. But we trust them, that it's gonna happen, it's not a big deal. But now it's formal, and they need to see this formality in their new.
So the whole purchase price is being done.
Yes, the whole thing, the whole thing. So, yes, we're so gracious. So, yeah, and we can use this trailer, just so you know, yes, for the football team, it's awesome, it's gonna be great. But it can also hold all those bikes that our preschool teacher was granted. Um, we can use it for one-act plays, when we do our one-act play over in Grand Meadow or Southland, wherever it may be. Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be great. So, we've needed one for years, folks, and.
Where's it coming from?
Pardon me?
Where's it coming from?
Harringtons.
Yep.
Yep, they gave us a heckle deal.
Yes, they did.
They're good to our, they are very good to our school district and our community, and. What helps? The LCF, I'm sorry, nope, that's okay. The LCF is the Leroy Community Foundation.
Yep.
Okay, so, what also helps, if we upfront the money, then licensing is easier and all that for a school district as well. I mean, that's not in policy, but we know it's easier when we do that.
Probably for Taiwan and all of that.
All of that, yes, yes. So it just works good for both. And then I'll email, um, Kevin and Kate tomorrow and let them know if you so choose to pass this.
Well, it seems like a no-brainer, it's all being donated, I guess.
Kind of is, it's just a backwards way, but it is a no-brainer.
Okay. Um, would someone like to make the motion to, uh, go ahead and approve the purchase of that enclosed trailer? Which is all gonna be donated, purchase price, so. Thanks, Angie, is there a second?
Do I have to abstain, since, since I'm on the Leroy Foundation, or it's not a personal thing? Yeah.
I'm honored to.
Yeah. I need your votes, because.
All right.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to be sure, though, I still, we'll be fine, yeah, okay.
So Angie's made the motion to approve that, is there a second?
I'll say.
Thanks, Dave. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Awesome. Okay.
Very awesome, thanks, guys.
All right, uh, moving on to some committee reports. Um, I got one. So we just met tonight, our building grounds committee. And, uh, we talked about a number of things. Uh, first of which, uh, is the lawn and the weeds around the place. And so, uh, Jen and Erin are gonna work hard and make them get that straightened out, okay? Um, there's sidewalk out here in front of the pool that needs to be plowed. Um, media, was it media con?
Media con.
Media con that put in, uh, new stuff, they're getting new stuff there. And, uh, so what they're gonna do is, is contact them and see if they'll pay for replacing that sidewalk. Otherwise, that needs to get done, it should get done before school starts as well. Um, then, um, we've just made aware of, uh, bathroom problems down in the, in the elementary boys' bathroom, but the water's been off since, since, uh, April, and most haven't been working. Um, there is a plumber coming in, is that tomorrow?
It's this week, I wanna say, I might have been wrong with five, it's Thursday. I wanna say Thursday.
This week, anyway. Um, in regards to the Cardinal Kids bathroom. But they're gonna prioritize getting that fixed. And then there's, uh, toilets in the pool, both pool bathrooms, that are, have been, uh, not working for a while. So they're gonna prioritize that stuff, and then, and then if you're gonna work on anything, okay? Um, mold was found in, uh, in the music room, but that's been taken care of now. I think we've got, they all been made aware of that. Um, this is a whole lot of it. Didn't they think it was from the plant?
That's, you're talking Cardinal Kids, Cardinal Care.
Yeah.
Lots of water there.
Yeah. And then, uh, gonna start researching, uh, a new sizable project for next year, next summer, which would be taking care of the water problems around here, um, with the water softer and maybe some other filtration things. So we're gonna start researching that and see, you know, what we're gonna need there. Pipes are all corroded and all those kind of things, so that's, that's a big issue as well. So we're gonna see about trying to tackle that next year. Anything else that I forgot about, Jen? We didn't have a real great turnout for our committee meeting, but. So.
Yeah.
Um, this, this week we become responsible for the, the sidewalk.
Seems like they check that out.
That's what I've been communicating to them.
It's not a big area, it's not gonna be a huge cost, anyway.
Right.
If it's gonna become a, uh, problem getting media con, then we should just.
Yeah, we just do it.
Right.
Um, with regards to the opening of the school year, and what type of information has been sent to parents as to where to drop their kids off? Where will the buses be? Where should the families come? You know, has, has there been communication to our families as to how to do it and where?
No.
Okay, one is scheduled for next week. A pretty significant communication.
Okay.
Uh, and that'll be on our website and Facebook. Yep, yep. Because we also want to get some feedback from the teachers, too, those that are, you know, supervising out there, what's best fit for them.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's a pretty significant one, basically saying, we can't drive down Highway fifty-six at all.
Right.
Don't even come through the front door, it's not even worth it with all the construction out there.
Yeah.
You know, things like that, some very obvious things, but also some specifics that they need to know.
And then like throughout the day, obviously, they can't come in that monitored door.
Right.
So what is the policy, and where should they come, and how should they enter the building? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We have to really address that, because it's going to take some time before that's done. And so like, you know, like, let's say somebody forgot their lunch or whatever, where, what doors should they come in? What's the security, how should they?
Yeah. They don't probably run it with the summer, using the pool door, because they have cameras on them.
Right.
So we'll probably contain that, but we'll get all that communicated.
Yeah, okay.
Has there been any communication with the contractors out there, on like, like an ETA, I don't know, it'll be done?
The last.
We have heard multiple dates, yeah. At first, we heard it'll be done by September.
Yep.
And then we heard December. And, so I don't know.
Okay, just say where's the problem.
The last, the last email that, uh, they'd sent out said something about the open, has to be done with this end, to the point that the East End is by the end of August. There's no way that's.
I thought I heard.
Well, I've been talking with Nick from the city just yesterday, he was met with the engineers and whatnot, and they, all they have left to do here is put in the, the, the storm sewer, and then they're packing it and putting, putting black top on, they thought, two weeks. They want to be doing it at the end of this week, but it's not gonna happen, I don't think, because there's not as much.
It's still a eight feet.
In front of the, in front of the school?
Yeah, open up this whole end in two to three weeks, which would be great, but.
That'd be amazing, yeah. It just doesn't look like they're gonna be close to that.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, so, yeah, anyway, I think that's it for building and grounds. For now. Anything else that anybody's got? Um, one from the MSBA, um, Deb had a great idea of, there's a, there's a course on there for a school board handbook. Um, and with a very high turnover in board members this year, it might be a good, um, learning opportunity for, for new people coming on to go through what, what's all, what all entails of being on a school board. Um, yeah.
Angie has it up, it's very nice.
Cause where do they start, that phase one, phase two? I mean, that's usually right after their election.
Yeah, this is a little, this is a little more vocal than that. Hold that up once.
Yeah.
What I, what I would like to suggest is, if we as a board had like a little work session, an hour or something, run through this real quick. There's lots of places where you can personalize it to your school. And then, um, you know, a couple of us, or all of us, could meet with, once the election is done, but before that first meeting, and before they really get into the bigger trainings. If we could just meet with them and say, our school board usually does this, we usually do this, you know? Um, if you get a phone call when you're on the school board, how are you supposed to handle that? How do you do social media? Um, it's, it's really laid out, it's really laid out so you can personalize it to your school, so we can, we can make it bigger or smaller. I mean, I would make it a little smaller, personally. Um, but I just remember coming on as a new board member, and the very first meeting you sit in on is the restructuring. And it's like, what committee do you want to be on here? Like, what are the committee, what's a committee, what, what?
What's that committee do?
Yeah, what does the, and you know, like, not that they're gonna learn everything, and I still think that we should really encourage them to take train, phase one, phase two, that was really helpful, don't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah. But this is like a more, it's a more mentoring, more personalized, more like locally. We meet on Tuesdays usually, you know, this is, this is who you contact if you need to. It even has a place in here where you can just put some names and numbers and, you know, like, just for more, um, local. So, I don't, I don't know how the board feels, but I think it'd be worth it for us to sit down as a group, pummel through this, someone who has good media skills can fill it in as we go. Not I, but someone else could do that with us, you know? Just because there's places where you just take this document and just fill in your stuff, and then it becomes a, your thing, so. I don't know how you all feel about that, but thanks for bringing that up, Dave.
Yes. Well, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. So maybe, uh, you know, in November, right after the.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Okay, well, we can maybe decide that at that, at the meeting.
Yeah.
Speaking of the November meeting.
Angie just sent it to me, so, yeah.
Um, oh, we'll get to that later, I put that note down here, too.
The other thing I just wanted to mention, I don't think it's directly my committee, but, um, the arts, for the arts, um, the Newsies is the musical that's being done in Southland, and it is September, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, which is a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The Sunday one is a matinee at two. And then it's also the twenty-first. So it's being presented in Southland, and, um, two students from Leroy are, are participating this year, so.
And I think we are going as grades three through twelve on the twelfth? Probably the day before, I think, yeah, Thursday, maybe, something like that, but, yeah.
They're having.
So it's posted that, the teachers, so that's cool.
And so, I just think it's fun that they're being able to, to participate, you know?
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have anything else, any other committee things? Okay. I do have a question, Deb, I don't know if this is out of order or not, but, um, so, right now, we have six board members instead of seven, right? And we don't need to, uh, fill that, uh, because the election is so close, okay? But we all know that there's only three that have filed for election. So I think something that we need to think about as a board is, what are we gonna do about that when the time comes? We can change to a six-person board and be done that way.
Can we do that when we have four open, though? That, that would be my question. Cause we, I, and I might say that we can't go to six, but if we, said we are, like, have four open, I don't know, that we can just dial up and I can say, oh, we only got three, we're over that.
I have no idea.
We, we just got a, um, we just got a bullet from MSBA with a two-paragraph thing that says, if you didn't get enough people, here's what you can do.
Oh, okay.
Um, it just came today, and I thought I made a copy of it, but I don't have it here. It says that it's, um, write-ins, and they do not have to accept. And then if they're, um.
Day, meaning the person.
The person, yep, so the write-in, so you take the Hyde's write-in, so say Dylan has written in, and he says, I don't want to do that, we don't, we can't force him to do that. So then it says he would move on to appoint a person to serve on the board until a special election can be held in twenty-twenty-five, so then we're back to paying those election costs again, because we would, it'd be at our. Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can't help it if it is, but.
So, do we, do we have to accept a write-in? Or can we say, before the election, that we're going to appoint someone for that? How does that work?
I think the, it is a write-in, because it's a true election.
Okay.
And then it is.
That's how that, that's how that means, that you, you have to. But I'm guessing, since this was sent out, we're not the only ones in this, right?
Right.
Right.
Everybody loves this job, right? Okay.
Um, yeah, so we have the guidelines.
I just wanted to bring it up for something that rest of the year, we have to think about, you know?
Do we actually have a written policy that we're a seven-member board? And would we really want to change that, because?
I don't know, I'm just saying, I mean, that's a, that is an option, we could do that.
It's in statute, you can change it.
It's just something thrown out there.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah.
I'm not even saying that that's a good idea.
Yeah, you're just saying, yeah.
Okay, anyway, just something for us to think about, because we got a couple of months and we have an election, so. Okay. Um, moving on, I'm checking the calendar, is, uh, starting on the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, is the staff development. September second's Labor Day, September third is the first day of school for the middle school and high school. September fifth is the elementary's first day of school. Uh, October seventeenth through eighteenth is, uh, MEA. Um, October twenty-first is another staff development, so there's no school. Um, November eighth is staff development and no school. We just talked about the election, that's November fifth. Um, and because of, uh,